Like the Cobb County Commission to order for our regular January meeting, January seventeenth. If you would, go ahead and log in on your computers as your roll call. I would tell you that Mr. Bales would be with us tonight, but his son is graduating in the military, so he felt like he ought to be there, and that's, that's good, too. So that's why he's not here. All right. We do have a quorum. I'll ask our chaplain, Mr. Coleman, if he'll lead us in our prayer and Sammy Solomon, if he'll lead us in our pledge.
For heavenly God, as we stand before you tonight, we give praise and thanksgiving for bringing us together once again. We thank the Lord for each one, and we pray God that He give us the mind to be able to make right decisions concerning new people tonight. Rest your blessings, God, upon them, and bless the way tonight, many in the country that struggle for a way of living tonight. We just pray that your blessings be upon them. Bless God that He would bless the moderator tonight, for it's what he was saying and done here that has not bring glory to your holy name, which in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like for the members of youth leadership to stand so that we can recognize them for being here tonight. That, that explains the agenda shortage. They have to have assigned agenda to take back to class, so we can help you all out later. Thank you so much. Commissioners, when you speak anytime tonight, make sure there's a green light on your microphone. This is recording, it's live, so they can hear you if it's not on. So first item is approval of corrections to the agenda. We have some items that needs to be removed and some items that needs to be amended. Chair will take an order to suspend rules to agenda amendment.
So, where's Chairman?
Mr. Scarlett, second by Mr. Seal. There are two budget items that were not presented to budget. And when you look under number nine, your budgets, item F, Fund 131, number four, item one, was not done by budget. Under school amendment, item C, Fund 141, number fifteen, item one, was not gone through budget, and they've asked that that be added to the agenda. In the addition to that, there's a zoning, sorry, Resolution 2023-07, the developer has asked that that be removed from the agenda and not be voted on.
That's right.
The second, the next thing is Commissioner Brooks has contacted me and is ill and is unable to be here and has asked that his motions be removed from the agenda, and he'd like to bring it down another meeting. So I think that's covered everything on the agenda change. So it takes free force to change this agenda.
Did you say forty-three oh seven?
I may have said wrong now, hold on. Twenty, twenty-two fifty, I'm sorry. The zoning map changed. Now, you're probably right, Mark, except for my son. It's Resolution 2250, Resolution in the zoning map, the developer and the owner has asked it be removed and not be voted on. Any discussion? Motion to second? All in favor of?
You got to a motion spin, and then you got to a motion to add and do the agenda.
I need a motion to suspend rule.
They've got one of those.
Yeah, and a second, Mr. Seal. So let's vote on suspending the rules. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes fourteen. Passes nineteen zero. Now we would need a motion on what I previously said, unless you want me to repeat again. We're adding two amendments. We're removing the zoning resolution, and we're removing Mr. Brooks' motions. So we would need a motion and a second on that. And we got it. Any discussion? Where to speak? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes nineteen oh. So we'll change the agenda for that. This is a special time in our meetings when we do honorary resolutions in recognition. And when I did the, the work session, I had another name down there, and she is unable to be here, and hopefully she can be here another day. So the family of Stanley Wilder, if, if those of you that are here for Stanley could come to the podium over here, we'd like to recognize you at this time. Well, maybe over here, since you're over there, though. Thank you for coming. Whereas Stanley H. Wilder served the town of White Pine, Tennessee, as mayor for twenty-seven years with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principle. And whereas Stanley H. Wilder not only loved his family, but loved God and demonstrated his true Christian spirit by serving others, he was a deacon of his church and served on many other committees. His strong faith, determination, and belief in God remain positive when faced with many challenges. He was a true public servant. Whereas Stanley H. Wilder served the residents of Jefferson County, was chosen Jefferson County another year in 2020, he will be remembered for his helpful, caring attitude, friendship, and is loved by many friends and family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee recognizes and gratefully acknowledges the exemplary spirit, outstanding leadership, and commitment. Be it further resolved that the Jefferson County legislative body commemorates a dedicated and cherished colleague who worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County and the town of White Pine. Therefore, further resolved that this honorary resolution be presented to the family of Stanley Wilder, a copy to be spread across the minutes of the county commission meeting to be a permanent record of thanks and gratitude to Stanley Wilder. And then as such, request of Paul Lowe and other members from Stanley's district. So I'll ask Mr. Lowe. Thank you. I'll ask anybody with the Tommy Love family to come stand over here at the same spot. Well, maybe over there, since you're on that side. Whichever's easiest. And Mr. Longmire will make the presentation and proclamation once it's read. Whereas Tommy Arlove, having served with great affection and dedication to Jefferson County facilities and maintenance department, is worthy of special recognition and appreciation. Whereas Tommy Arlove took great pride in his attention to detail went above and beyond in carrying out his maintenance duties. His strong faith, determination, and belief in God remain positive when faced with many challenges. Whereas Tommy Arlove will be remembered for his helpful, caring attitude and friendship, and is loved by many friends and family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee recognizes and gratefully acknowledges a dedicated and cherished colleague who worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County. Be it further resolved that this honorary resolution be presented to the family of Tommy Love and a copy be spread across the minutes of the county commission meeting to be a permanent record of thanks and gratitude to Tommy Love. Thank you so much for coming. Those that don't know, Tommy worked as long as he could, and longer than he probably should, but he was still here, dedicated worker to this county, and I just wanted to say that he was, he was a great athlete. Next item is approval of minutes. We're going to group them together, regular quarterly sessions, special call, and beer board minutes. We have a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Seen none, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes nineteen oh. This brings us to citizens comments. Mr. Reed was going to read a comment, citizen's comment from David Seal, and we, you have three minutes.
This is from David Seal, seven thirty, Salem Martin Road, Dandridge, Tennessee, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Citizen comment on zoning issue. Mr. Chairman and members of commission, the chairman of Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission recently stated that zoning in Jefferson County is a failure and is not working for the citizens of the county. I and many other people in the county agree with Mr. Renault's statement. The issue needs attention from the people that will be impacted by rezoning of the zoning map. Accordingly, recommendations on zoning should originate from citizens, not from the Regional Planning Commission. I strongly suggest that any action on major zoning changes should be delayed until the Long Range Planning Committee can hold a series of meetings with citizens across Jefferson County to carefully evaluate our zoning map. Having this level of citizen preparation, of participation, will create a set of recommendations that can be respected by both the county commission and the public at large. Please don't miss the opportunity to connect with a citizen on the impractical issue. After all, it will be their community that are affected by the decision that you make, make on zoning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Beth Nelson, if you come to the microphone, name and address, and you have three minutes.
Beth Nelson, Strawberry Plains. I'm here again to stress the need for a strategic and comprehensive growth plan for Jefferson County. Creating overlays for commercial and industrial use down the entire corridors of our county is basically getting the cart before the horse. We have no plan. Our zoning needs work, and it needs a lot of work. We have trouble in A1 because everything's dumped in there, and everybody complains because there's issues. There's issues because we have issues with our zoning, and it needs reworked. How can we have success with any changes to our zoning if we don't have a master plan to preserve and protect our properties and provide for the citizens of this county? I would further add, it's by state code that we follow the current land use plan, which seems to be somewhat in question. We have a great opportunity to put an overall comprehensive and strategic plan in place to assist with proper zoning, to again, preserve and protect our county and take care of our county citizens. We have a chance, the chance to really do something special here with the proper information, with proper guidance, and with proper zoning structure. I dare to say that there's no one in this building that believes we don't live in a special place, a special place we all call home. Let's do something to keep it that way. You have the opportunity before you to do that. There's no do-over. You know, once we destroy our properties and destroy our county, there's no going back. We're not going to redo our land. There's no going back. We either get it right, or we look back and we suffer the consequences for the next generations to come. I see absolutely no reason to ignore the need for our county. Would you please, please consider a comprehensive and strategic plan for this county? It will eliminate many issues, and issues I've had to stand before this podium and defend, and send it on to Long Range Planning and let a strategic and comprehensive plan for the county be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Knight. Ms. Knight, if you give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
So I'm revising my thoughts in my head as I'm speaking. My name is Marion Knight. I live at four forty West Main Street in Danbridge. And I just watched the Long Range Planning Commission, so I'm going to revise what I was going to say just a bit. And I, too, will support the Long Range Planning Commission developing a strategic and comprehensive plan, but I also do feel that at the end of that, we need to address the zoning issues that we have. I don't support blanket rezoning because I believe in personal property rights, and I think blanket rezoning would violate that. But I do support some major revisions to the zoning resolutions. So zoning resolutions came to my attention last fall when Plus Power asked for battery energy storage systems, in this case, a two hundred and fifty million watt lithium ion battery facility to be added as an approved use in the A1 agricultural forestry district. Zoning Appeals Board approved this request at their November twenty-second meeting. I was surprised, as it didn't seem like an agricultural or forestry used to me. So I looked at the zoning resolutions for A1 online and found that very few of the approved uses are actually related to agriculture or forestry. So I provided you a copy of what is currently in an A1 district approved, and in fact, many of these uses appear to be copied directly from the two commercial districts. In addition, these zoning uses are in direct conflict with both the current land use plan for the county and some proposed changes to that land use plan that I read about recently. So it's time to review the zoning resolutions, but not until the strategic and comprehensive plan is developed. So I, I hope that you will support the Long Range Planning Commission in its desire to develop a strategic and comprehensive plan, and after that, I hope that you will look at zoning closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Litchi. How, how far off was on your name? Is it Litchi?
You said it right on, Lichty.
Perfect, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Mark Lichty. I live at three ten Leaper Overlook in Danbridge, Tennessee. As citizens of the county, we agree a hundred percent and would support the county commission engaging with a professional organization to assist with the development of a comprehensive strategic plan for the county. As citizens of the county, we have experienced firsthand the impacts of inconsistent zoning regulations and development standards that are not, that are not aligned with the land use plan. Key points for consideration. The Long Range Planning Committee should be designated as the project champion or project steering committee for this effort. The process should involve representation from each city government in order to ensure alignment and consensus with an overall county plan going forward, involving citizens in the process, as we would welcome the opportunity to participate. Given the number of months such an effort requires, we strongly recommend the county commissioners direct the regional planning commission to address the agriculture and forestry zoning district now. Removing the controversial items such as travel trailer parks, campgrounds, marinas, et cetera, that are not in line with the zoning objectives as stated in the current land use plan to avoid conflicts that arise when locating incompatible land uses near each other. Doing so will put a Band-Aid in place until the county completes the comprehensive plan by requiring landlords who wish to pursue permitted uses, such as these apply for a zoning change request or special use permit, which at least allows abiding property owners to participate in the zoning request change and our special use permit process. We also recommend, regardless of zone district or type of development, that the county always leave an option open for additional requirements being required of the developer, such as additional or different buffering requirements depending on what surrounds or abuts the property in order to enhance or improve all properties involved. And lastly, we strongly recommend the county commissioners direct the regional planning commission hold off with a zoning overlay that would designate commercial industrial zoning along each of the county's major highway routes until the comprehensive plan is completed. We recommend a process for all existing agriculture, forestry zone properties, whether located on major routes or not, be evaluated based on existing abiding land uses and determine which should remain agriculture, rural residential, and which have the potential for commercial industrial development. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Dooley says you want to address Resolution 2022 dash fifty. That's been pulled from the agenda, unless you want to try to put it back on the agenda. All right, I didn't think so. John C. Cummins.
My name's John Cummins. I live at seventeen oh five Lee Circle in Newmarket, and right next to Sammy Solomon's dad. Lived there for twenty-five years. Mayor, I know that you, and most of the people sitting around here have heard the myth of Pandora's box. Pandora's box was not to be opened, but the curiosity of Pandora, she was a very beautiful princess, got the best of her, and the box was pretty beautiful. All sorts of ugly things came out of the box, though. Pandora's box contained the seven deadliest sins: wrath, gluttony, greed, envy, sloth, pride, and lust. Some things should stay closed in boxes. Some closet doors should remain shut. In addition, some definitions should not change. We live in a time when language is being hijacked. Simple definitions have been changed, altered, and corrupted. Three such definitions are gay, gender, and resilient. When I grew up, gay clearly meant happy, contrary to the modern ChatGPT robot that's out there, contrary to the revised dictionaries. Gay did not mean the slightest referred to deviant sexual behavior. In the beginning, obviously, God made man and woman, male and female. Gender was a grammatical distinction and applied to words only. It referred strictly to language. God did not make a hundred and thirty-eight genders, seventy-eight of which are recognized at most so-called universities. No, at birth, every cell of one's body has either an XX chromosome or an XY chromosome. I belong to a group called Building Community Resilience. We meet the last Saturday of each month in Straw Plains from ten to twelve. If anyone wants to know, I can tell you later about it, but this group is a group that helps the community thrive in tough times. We use the commonly understood definition for resilience, which means tough or able to be flexible and thrive in the world. During the commission work session last week, listening to one of the speakers, I found that the word resilient is being redefined. Resilience now includes affirmation of those who desire to mutilate their bodies, falsely claiming that they've been sexually changed, when every single cell of their body screams that their sexual identity is the same as it was from day one. While a person might be physically mutilated through surgery and hormone treatments, that person's very genetic code will cry out to the contrary. This fact will certainly cause mental dissonance in any living soul. Now, if you do a search of the CDC.gov website, they've redefined the term resilient to mean affirmation of those who would want to transform from one sex to another, so it's a perversion or corruption of a simple definition. Mayor, I'm asking the commission here to vote against the mutilation of young people's bodies and for 2023-07, because this confusion among children will drastically increase suicide among the young. It must not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Catherine Christings? Nope. Doug Gibson, one of our school board members. Glad to have you with us, Doug.
Thank you very much. I am a City School Board member. My name is Doug Gibson, twenty-five ten Indian Creek Road, Danbridge. I'm speaking as an individual tonight. However, what I am here for is to personally extend an invitation to all county commissioners to come to the school board annual retreat that's being held at Patriot Academy next Saturday. The entire first hour is being set aside for the school board and the county commission to engage in conversation about a longstanding, rather thorny issue concerning the future of Jefferson Elementary School. Having spoken to the majority of the school board members, there is a great desire among us to begin mending past fences that have been torn down, for whatever reason, between the school board and the county commission. We yearn, and I emphasize that, to cooperate with our peers, our elected peers on the county commission. Please do not let past actions on the part of either of our bodies get in the way of going forward. We want to cooperate, we want to discuss, and we want to progress in an orderly, mature manner. Please come to our retreat. We really want you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susie Darnigan.
Hello. I'd like to talk to you tonight about embracing-
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Susie Darnigan, and I live at twelve sixty-two Lakeview Drive in Danbridge. So I want to talk to you tonight about embracing the beauty of Danbridge. I'm very grateful for our town, and I would like to bring attention to the flood of new signs and lights that are around us. They're coming into our towns and along our roadways, and we need to be aware that not only do that space and size draw from our surroundings, but the streaming LED lights are so bright, it stuns the senses. Is there a brightness adjustment on these signs, like on a TV or on a phone? Our area has a different vibe because there are barriers like farms and lakes that minimize the light pollution in our area. Let's continue to make this a priority to keep- Let's continue to make this a priority to keep clear the roads and possibly put some parks on the sides of the road sides for the future. So our views are not destroyed by unwanted clear cutting. Let's think about the different neighborhoods we're putting in here. When we fill our beautiful areas with cookie cutter homes that threaten our small town feel, the large neighborhood puts us into traffic nightmares that we are not equipped to deal with and other things that you all are aware of, like the schools. Lastly, let's keep our neighborhoods free of junk, preserve our beauty, and limit or delay more streaming lights, especially the LED lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Huff. Bill, give us your name and address, ma'am. You have three minutes.
My name is Alicia Huff and I live in Strawberry Plains. I'm asking you tonight to vote in favor of Resolution 2023-07. We have, I don't want to, I don't want to automatically assume that you will. I would like to assume that you will, but I'm asking you to vote in favor of this because it's so important. It is probably the most important thing on our agenda. Our children matter more than anything else here. The fact that this is even an issue in our society is incredibly dangerous. And anyone who thinks otherwise has a mindset that truth is relative. Truth is not relative. If you have any common sense, truth is not relative. Truth is truth. And to think that a child who cannot, doesn't fully have the capacity of their brain, because it's not fully grown yet, could possibly make a decision without parental consent, without parents even knowing, a decision that could alter the genetic makeup of their body because it changes hormones, it changes the gene tags, it changes things for their future generations. To think that we could allow our children to make this decision when they're actually counseled by those who will make the money off of this is absolutely despicable. And it has to be stopped. And if that means that every county in our state is for this surgery being allowed in our state, but our county says no, then that's what we need to do. Even if everybody else in the world says this is okay, it's not okay. And we need to be the ones, if nobody else will, we need to be the ones to stand up and say, we're not going to allow this. We're not going to be for it in our, in our state. We're not going to allow it in our county. We're going to prohibit that wickedness. And so I'm asking you not only to be in favor of this resolution, but I'm asking you to make a stand personally, to make a stand and to keep this in the forefront of your mind. This and preborn babies are probably the two most important topics today. And if these aren't something that we keep right in front of us, then we're taking, we're taking for granted that we have something that we can do about it. So I'm asking you not only to vote in favor of this, but I'm asking you to keep this right in front of you, to pray about it, to continually speak to those around you about the truth of the matter. And that is that our children should never be allowed to be influenced by this wickedness. We have to protect them because nobody else is going to if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of notaries and bonds. The clerk has provided you, he's also added three extra names tonight. We have a motion to approve and a second, third, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving these notaries, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next item is mayoral appointments. It's a reappointment of Dale Christman to the E911 Board and Public Records Wayne Roberts. So these are mayoral appointments. Passes 19-0. Next item is acceptance of new roads into Jefferson County by the Jefferson County Highway Department. That list is in your packet. A motion would be in order to approve it. Comes recommended from Mr. Tipton. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passed by the majority, 19-0. Next item is bids and quotes policy number 3.2. It defines which outlets to use for bids and quotes. State banner, Jefferson County Post, Jefferson County Government Website. That is highlighted in the bids and quote policy. Motion and second would be in order. Seeing no requests to speak, approves 19-0. That brings us to resolutions. Is it okay with the body if we approve all resolutions at one time? Nobody's got a problem with that? Okay, these are resolutions to surplus items. The list is there. You've had time to look it over. So a motion to surplus these items from these departments would be in order. All in favor, vote yes. No if you're opposed. Passes 19-0. The other item was school, a resolution to surplus and dispose. That's just an FYI. It's information only for you. The school has disposed of that prospect. They have to let you know. All right. And that brings us down to budget amendments. We have added two. Chairman, other budget.
Yes, sir. First one is general fund 101, amendment 13. Uses $39,200, $39,200 fund balance and $821.92 reserves. Chairman, so moved it.
Needs no motion or second coming from a committee. Any requests to speak? Seeing none, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next budget amendment.
Number 14. Items 1, 2, 3. Using $6,360.67 fund balance. General sessions and county retirees, so moved it, Mr. Chairman.
Needs no second. No requests to speak, all in favor, vote yes.
Oh, I won't speak on that one.
Okay.
I will say right up front, I am not against the retirement getting the money. I'm not against the service they put in. But I'm against how we're doing this. Again, we're rushing judgment on this thing with the motion. The motion that was made to do the raises and stuff was a bad motion. It was put forth with little thought. There was no direction given to the finance department and so now we're here. The problem with doing this motion is we've got this motion. We've got a vote that was taken. That vote included somebody that's going to benefit from this and I cannot support this right here. I thought.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, all in favor, budget amendment, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 12-6 with one instance. Next budget amendment.
Budget amendment 116. Number three. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
Council of the Budget Committee needs no second. No requests to speak. You may proceed, both. Yes if you're in favor, no if you're opposed. Passes 19-0. Next budget amendment.
Fund 127. Number four. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak, all in favor of this budget amendment, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next, next item.
Highway Fund 131. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
And no requests to speak, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next item is one that we added and it's on your agenda or most of your agendas.
Debt Service 151, amendment one. This motion went through the budget. Is this? No, there's another. Okay, I'm sorry. 131, I'm sorry. Number four. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? Yes or no? Passes 19-0. Next one is 151 and I believe that was approved by the budget committee.
That was approved by the budget committee. We talked about it just so everybody understands what we're doing. We still owe a little bit of money on the jail. That is the last piece of county debt that we owe. The remaining debt is for what we renovated the schools and built the two new schools for and a couple, a couple of other things with the schools. But the majority of it were renovated, the high school, Mount Hor, Patriot Academy. This debt is coming due. It is on a variable note. It is-
Now go ahead and answer it, Joe.
Phil Ho.
We have the money in the debt service to pay this off, to issue $2.4 million worth of bonds. Ms. Jessica, approximately $300,000, a little less is what the bond company. So basically 12% or 15% of what we're going to have. We have the money to pay it off. What was voted for with the budget committee is that we go ahead and pay this off, mark it off, be done with it. And we take the money that we were doing the payment with this and we're going to apply it when the bond comes up on the freshman academy because it is an interest only. It was one of those government bonds during the Obama era. That bond is interest only until 2034, or 2036, I'm sorry, which at that time, we've got to stroke out $4 million a year for four years in principle. But if we apply this to that, by the time we get there, we will have paid that. We will not have to adjust the tax rate for that payment. We can continue on down the road and you'll see no difference in the debt service if we leave that in there. And that was the recommendation of the budget committee is to have the finance department proceed for this. So I just want everybody to be clear what we're doing on this. This does two things. Pays it off, takes that money and starts, it will start applying it when we're able to refinance the bonds. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
Needs no second. Any requests to speak? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. That $2.4 million is weak. All right, next item.
Fuel budget, 141, or I'm sorry, landfill 207. It's empty. Item two, so moved it, Mr. Chairman. This is for fuel.
It's just no fuel. No requests to speak, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Network schools, sir.
Fund 141, item 12, 1 through 4. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next item.
141, item 13. So moved it, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next item is one that you added, item C.
141, item 15. So moved it, Mr. Chairman. You will need a second on that.
Yeah, because it's not come from the committee.
It's not come before the budget committee.
So you're making a motion?
I'm making the motion to do it.
He's making a motion, so we need a second. We have a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. Next item.
143. Number four, items one and two, so moved it, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0. That brings us to the nominating committee.
Got one more, 177.
No, I'm sorry.
Fund 177, item two, or number two, one item, so moved it, Mr. Chairman.
Any, no requests to speak? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0.
That was it, Mr. Chairman.
Now we're at, now we're at a nominating committee report. Who's the chair?
Randy would have been, but he-
Okay, I'll present it for him. Audit committee, they recommend Dale Allen, Phil Spess has resigned to complete her term and Industrial Development Board, Wayne Craig, to continue the term of Danny Schell. Their dates and times are in there. That's a motion from the nominating committee and needs no second. Any other nominations or requests to speak? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes 19-0.
You think it'll be all right, Mr. Carroll?
Oh, they're kind of related. Resolution 2023-07. Needs no second. It has four different sponsors. I know Austin Brooks wanted to speak to it. Do any of the other sponsors want to speak to it? Joe, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words out. I liked what the lady said about it back there, about our children being the most important asset we've got. And if we don't stand up against this piracy of our children that's going on, it's coming to Tennessee. It's already in most of it. And there's some of it in our local schools. I had a little great granddaughter that was with me in the campaign trail. We'd come out to Windis on that day and to get a burger at lunchtime. And as I asked the blessing on the food that day, she kind of bowed her head and as she looked at that and she said, Papa, I worry about my stool. And I said, what's- And I said, what's the matter? Does somebody make you feel bad? And she said, sometimes. I said, do they make you feel bad because of who you are? She said, sometimes. And she don't live here now, they moved to Georgia. But you know, she was ten years old, and she was already feeling bad because she was made to feel bad. I said, who made you feel bad? She said, my teacher. So let's be careful about that. Let's make sure that our teachers are doing their job. Let's make sure that the school board is doing their job. And I'm sure that law enforcement's doing their job to take care of these children out there. So let's all pray about these situations going on in our school. God will hear us if we go to Him with an open heart. But if we step back and do nothing, then our children will be gobbled up in this world affairs. And the world's changing fast. Somebody said a while ago that the dialogue's changing, we've got new words. I wrote something up here a while back about the woke dictionary. And everybody ought to get their copy every month, because it changes every month. All these woke words that you see going on. It's destroying the minds of our children. Little children don't know nothing except what the parents teach them, or the school teaches them. And sometimes government is the wrong teacher. Our parents is the best teacher for the children, amen?
Amen.
So let's pray about this and make sure that your vote counts, and when you can stand up, have an opportunity to take the podium, take the podium for the children, okay?
Mr. Reed?
Mr. Chairman, the two citizens that spoke concerning, yes, for Dad on Target, our children, or the future of our country. They'll become leaders, they'll serve in the military, I hope, cause only one percent of the US population dies there. And I know when we become adults, we can make our own mind up on the way we want to live. But when you have young children who are being influenced by psychologists and psychiatrists questioning their gender, it's not right. If they don't get it at home, where are they gonna get it? I do know in this county that we do have psychologists and psychiatrists who counsel our children. And one of the things they believe in is the wokeness of our society. So I totally agree, the, the two citizens, and this is probably one of the most important votes you will take, as a Commissioner, on your time. It's time for us to really believe, to stand up and say, whatever you think is your opinion, what we think is our opinion. And God made man, He made woman, He made boy, He made girl. When they get to be adult, and they want that, then that's fine. The children are too impressionable. I've got a little, little two-year-old great-granddaughter who rules a roost, and believes that she's a girl, and she is a girl. But I'd also be willing to bet that along the line, she's probably gonna get some impression and start questioning, because with all the stuff our kids face, a lot of times a fad comes along and they grab for it. And they wanna take part in it, cause they think it sounds good. But what the lady stated up here is true. More and more who have went through this situation are completely regretting it, and now they can't do a thing about it. Thank you.
Mr. Scarlett?
I agree with what Mr. Coleman said, and I even agree with what Mr. Reed said. Which sometime, and I done seen him laugh, which is rare. But what I am worried about right now is, what are we voting on? And I know it says in act, but the part that say, worries me, it said amend legislation. I'm not seeing what we're voting on, Mr. Chairman. Does anybody have a copy of that? We got any copy of the verbiage of what we're voting on?
There were what?
I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Andrew.
There was some information that was sent out to Commissioners, and I think most of the Commissioners got it, because this is something that's going on throughout, going on-
Yeah, but I mean, on the bill, we're, we're talking about legislation here, it goes into-
This is more to say, we can't do anything except state how we believe, okay? It'll go to the state legislature, we're asking them to take a look at this, because there's two bills there in the Senate. And I think those bills were sent out, I believe I sent them out myself.
I, I think the problem here is, uh, it was done by email.
Well, my machine's broke.
Yeah, I, I know, so, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's where we're at. I can get you copies. Legislature is voting on it, this is, uh-
Just asking them, so yes, to take in a stand as a county.
Now, since I've not got it, I'm gonna have to respectfully stay for calling.
Okay, um, Kate, help me.
Okay, I've got it right here. Okay, it's Resolution twenty-two thirty oh seven. A resolution recommending the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee enact or amend legislation protecting minors from gender reassignment surgery. Whereas, the need is great to protect children from life-altering and irreversible medical procedures such as gender reassignment surgery or other medical procedures that permanently alter the human body in a way that is inconsistent with the minor's biological sex. And whereas minors defined as a person under the age of eighteen years of age may lack the maturity to fully understand and appreciate the life-altering consequences of such procedures, and that many individuals have expressed regret for medical procedures that were performed on or administered to them for such purposes when they were minors. And whereas, the citizens of the State of Tennessee have an obligation, through their elected legislative representatives, to protect children from gender reassignment procedures that mutilate and permanently alter the human body. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee, meeting on the seventeenth day of January, twenty twenty-three as follows. Section one, that the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee is hereby urged to enact or amend legislation to protect children in this state from mutilation in the form of gender reassignment surgery or other medical procedures that alter the human body in a way that is inconsistent with the child's biological sex. Section two, that upon approval and signing of this resolution, a copy be transmitted to the state representatives and state senator that represent Jefferson County, Tennessee. Section three, that upon approval and signing of this resolution, a copy be transmitted to the county mayor and commissioners in other counties of Tennessee.
Say. Other requests to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I did not know that Mr. Commissioner Scarlett, that you had not read, seen the resolution, so-
Not at all, I hadn't, at first I'd heard it.
I'm sorry, I thought maybe you had got it in the packet that was given to you.
Okay. No other requests to speak? All in favor of Resolution twenty-two thirty oh seven? Vote yes, opposed vote no. Eighteen to one. Passes. We need to, uh, before we move forward, I think, and, uh, I think you all would agree, when we did Fund one thirty-one under the county number four, that was added, that didn't go through budget, we voted it, uh, favorably, but we didn't do a motion and a second on it.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Alright, so.
I second.
Then we got a motion, a second, so everybody's vote's still good on it?
Yeah.
Nobody objects, you can do it that way.
Nobody objects, it's now legal and it passed, I'm, did what? He's got to vote, so your vote will do things decently and in order. Sorry about that. Pass is nineteen zero. Next item is a donation of land in Jefferson County. There's some land that the county rug park's been taking care of, it's from a church. They brought it to Mr. Longmire, and they'd like for the county to take it back. Uh, Mr. Tipton said, we're already maintaining, it's just a small strip of land in the rug. So a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Seeing none. All in favor of vote yes, opposed vote no. Pass is nineteen zero. Resolution twenty-two fifty has been removed from the agenda. That brings us to the motion to hire purchasing agent for county and school. Ms. Huffaker, and so is a job description in your packet. Ms. Huffaker makes a motion. We have a second, we can discuss it.
Second.
Second, Margaret. Request to speak? Kate?
Okay, so, um, the Finance Department asked us to look at hiring a full-time purchasing agent. It unanimously passed in the Finance Committee, but there was a split vote in personnel with questions associated to it, so I wanted to bring it back to the full commission. And this position would be split fifty-fifty with the school system. So approximate pay scale would be around forty-five thousand to fifty thousand plus benefits, depending on the person's qualifications. But half of that would be paid out of the school budget. It wouldn't take effect until after July first, um, when the budget's set. So if it passes, I would like for it to go to the Budget Committee to figure out funding. Um, the benefits of a full-time purchasing agent would increase the bid limit for Jefferson County from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, um, for the bid limits. The increase of, every day, things are costing more and more money for purchases. So, things that were at the twenty-five limit previously are now exceeding it. So it, um, it'll reduce the cost and time for advertising. The Finance Department will still get three quotes will be required. It's easier to get quotes than bids. Um, more businesses will give you quotes, cause it's not as time-consuming, and it's not as much effort for them. It'll reduce evaluation time, it'll reduce legal work on bids, and we'll have a purchasing power where we can, um, tap into state contracts more for purchasing, because the person will be able to look it up more where the school system, the schools and the county have never had the time to look, take, to look up. So example, toilet paper, paper towels, paper, I know like each school orders their own copy paper with this, you could bulk buy. Um, another thing it'll do is, we're meeting quarterly, so sometimes we have to have special called meetings, because we've exceeded the twenty-five thousand dollar limit, so this'll help us to have reduced meetings. And also, it's something that the auditors have identified that our county should go toward. So if you have any questions, please direct them to Ms. Elder.
Request to speak? Mr. Scarlett?
I've got a couple of things. One is, point of order on your motion. If it does not convene until after the start of the budget, it will not come to the, it does not need to come to the Budget Committee. It goes to the Finance Department, because they present us a budget to do it. So it will, it goes to Ms. Elder's department. And then she'll put it in there and will either, the Budget Committee will either approve it or deny it and make the recommendation to the Commission.
During the budget process?
During the budget process, if it does not start until July one. If it starts before then, then you either need to suspend the motion, or suspend the rule with a motion, and take in where it's gonna come from, and put it in the motion, or you're gonna be waiting until after the Budget Committee meets, and the Commission meets.
And Dr. Arnold and I both requested it to be effective July first if it passes.
Okay.
So we did it, we're ready within the budget.
It goes to you with the budget, so if you want to remove that, that's probably a good thing.
I removed it.
And then the second question is for Ms. Elder. If we do this, what do you, and I know half of it's paid for the schools, but what do you see the benefits being? And what does it break down like, money-wise? It's, it benefits you twenty thousand dollars, it helps you out. Have you kinda looked at analyses of that? Could you address that?
Okay, so how it benefits us?
At least money-wise or time-wise, or what does it do for you?
Okay, through, so through the budget amendments that you all just approved, that does approve two full-time positions in our department now, for us to take over nutrition and food service. Um, that will be compensated, fully reimbursed from the schools as well. Um, they're offering to compensate for half of this position as well. So this is going to allow this person in our office to fully devote their time to this. Um, I can't produce the savings, cause we don't have the position yet, but I can just tell you right now. Uh, for examples, our school systems are all on different copier leases. I know the prior finance director really tried to get them on the same lease, so he does have about half of them on the same timeframe. And my goal for one of them would be to get all of them on the same timeframe, and that would allow us to have some savings on the school side. Um, this would free up some time in our office. Currently, I'm, I'm the purchasing agent for the county, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, that's under my job description. So I do solicit bids, advertise, we do our bid openings. Um, this person would have one hundred percent fully, that's what their job has to be dedicated to, for us to increase our bid limit. They would have a full-time job to look up ways to save money for the county and the schools. So I would ensure that would happen, trust me on that. Um, I do have some goals for this person, that would save time for the department, and not only the department, but the department heads. Cause I'm sure we have several department heads here in this room, that would love for someone to assist them in writing bids or help them find cheaper items for purchasing, or anything like that. Um, might have more knowledge of different things. Um, this person, I would ask to become a certified purchaser. There's different certifications that this person could, could get along the way. That's why there is a potential pay scale, depends what their qualifications they're hired in on. Did that answer your question, or did I go all around it?
I got another question now that you said that, is-
Point of order question.
Go ahead.
If I understood correctly, the motion has been pulled, so no motion on the floor, can we begin to discuss it without a motion?
She pulled, I assume you meant you was just pulling apart on the Budget Committee?
Correct, and that's what I thought you were telling me.
Yes. Follow-up question. If we do this, do you all need to review this in the Finance Committee to change your job description?
Potentially, however, I do want to oversee the purchasing agent, so I still want full oversight for it. Um, I will be responsible, I will be signing everything, so I really don't see how we would change it. Um, I would not be emailing Standard Banner, the county website, and Jefferson County Post personally. However, I would be overseeing all that, making sure it's done correctly and by law, and by our policy. So, I still see, um, a lot of work on my end in this. However, the goal is to have a full-time person to be able to prepare that stuff instead of me at this point.
Mr. Reed?
Did not, we used to have a purchasing agent quite a few years ago in the county?
Before we went centralized accounting?
Yeah.
My understanding, I think, was that Mr. Longmire before centralized?
Yeah, before the Act eighty-one come into play.
I thought the Act eighty-one came in, well, it's still at nine one one.
Yeah, but when the Act eighty-one come into play, then it took the purchasing agent.
Well, I do know something happened back doing that period of time, so just to make sure, because I, I like what you're saying. But when you say that you're gonna sign everything, that means when the checks go out, or whatever, you're gonna be signing the checks?
Yes, sir, that's my job description. Um, I, I will oversee everything.
I think before it, it happened the other way, so.
Okay, no, no, I will, I will be looking at all the bids as well.
That's great, thank you.
And everything, yes, sir.
Mr. Bird?
Yes, I was just gonna, in our meeting, you talked about how much it costs to advertise these bids in the newspaper- in the newspaper, now we're going to do Jefferson Post too. Uh, and you talked about the savings that, I mean, going from twenty-five to fifty thousand would help us just, we wouldn't have to advertise everything like we do right now, or it's not as much as we do right now, if I understood it right.
Yes, so we would raise our bid limit to fifty thousand dollars. So if they're able to get me three competitive quotes under fifty thousand dollars, then we would not have to advertise it at that point.
So you, I think you said something, I don't know how much, for some reason in my head is the advertising cost was, you know, it was going to be drastic, you know, help us out a lot. I mean, in the big scope of what we're talking about, but every little bit helps.
Sure, every, absolutely, in a zero-based budget, every little bit does help.
And that's something that you've not mentioned yet, how much we would be saving not having to advertise.
Correct.
All the time.
And, and I would like to go ahead, and I have also offered, and, and I stand by that. We do have a part-time position in our finance department. Um, currently, we do not have that field. So at this point, if we are able to take this purchasing agent on, the schools, Dr. Arnold has offered to pay half. I would love to give ten thousand of our part-time position. That would leave us just a little bit in our part-time, but ten thousand dollars of that as well. So if that helps anything, uh, that certainly helps me through budgeting. We would only have to come up with the remainder, which is maybe between ten to fifteen, depends, um, who is hired or what qualifications they have when they're hired.
Any requests to speak? Let me point out real quick, county commission has to pass a resolution to raise your bid limit to fifty thousand if you have this full-time purchasing agent. Without a full-time purchasing agent, you can't do that, so. You all read the vote, our favorite vote, yes, opposed vote, no. Passes twelve seven. Uh, the motion to change the county commission rules has been pulled. Cis simple has been pulled. That brings us down to a motion by Ms. Huffaker in regard to long-range planning.
Okay. After much thought on this topic, so this has to do with the regional planning commission's request to rezone. I want a motion to postpone the regional planning commission's request to research rezon, that's, that's the motion. Do you want me to speak to it or repeat the motion?
Your, he has to step out just a second, your motion is to postpone.
My motion's to postpone the regional planning commission's request to research rezoning county with overlays until the long-range planning committee makes a recommendation to the full commission and completes a long-range plan for the county. So, should I wait for him to come back to speak?
I need point of order on that, you probably, are you making a motion to deal with the long-range planning committee? Because the other one's got to be voted on.
No, I had a motion, I, I had requested a motion to send for the long-range planning committee to work on the request and work with regional planning. But in our...
You're going to have to handle that two separate deals. One is the motion you've got.
Okay.
And if you want, and then when they get to the other item.
Postpone that one.
You'll have to wait.
The second motion?
Yes.
Okay. So my first motion will be... My first motion's going to be for the long-range planning committee to work on developing a long-range plan collaborating with the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission.
You're good.
I apologize, I was meeting with a doctor today and they gave me something that said I made you believe right there. So you have a motion and a second, floors open to discussion.
I, I don't have a second.
You what now?
I don't think I have a second. I made a motion.
You made a motion, I, I got there before you did.
Hello. I'm trying to suggest, I hold. And that's an individual motion, not from the long-range planning committee?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Ray's second. I think you added, I think Poppy was ahead of you.
Sure.
Mr. Seale.
I guess this question for Katie, or who's the chairman of the long-range planning commission? And when do you meet and when have you met?
We met before this meeting.
Tonight?
Yes, Jim Snodgrass is the chair.
Oh, Jim is up.
Yeah, and...
I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have a clue.
Mr. Ray.
Uh, I, I would just like to say, after listening to the citizen comments tonight, I, I would hope that we would all really take a, a deep look at this. It's one of, it's one of the issues that's bothering a lot of people in this room. And, uh, I'm the type of person who, I like to listen to what the citizens say because they have such good ideas. And it was mentioned about even maybe having a professional help us with this. And I think this is important enough as a number of people have spoke against what we're doing on zoning. I hope when we look, the long-range planning committee looks at this, that they take that into consideration also. And maybe even consider some of these folks that spoke tonight to come in and listen to some of the recommendations they have. Thank you.
Mr. Scarlett.
I guess a question for, for Jim, what kind of timeline, and for Katie too, what kind of timeline are y'all talking about? When, uh, do you produce the results? Uh, are you presenting to the planning commission, or what do you, how do, how do you think about that process work?
Um, so I'll go back to when we had a meeting about a year and a half or so ago when we got this committee going. We have people in presenting, uh, two or three entities, and some, some would say twelve to eighteen months for the entire process. Now, that means going from, uh, strategic, comprehensive, there's three steps to it, I forget the first one. And a comprehensive, then a strategic plan. So, uh, we didn't, hon- honestly, we didn't make much progress, so that's what we talked about in tonight's meeting. So what we're doing, our next steps are to dust off the proposals, um, to see what the current potential cost may be and confirm timelines and make sure they actually do what we think they need to do. So I think I entered, yeah, here you go. It, it's a land use plan, um, and comprehensive plan, and then the strategic plan. Strategic growth plan, I'm sorry. So this is one of three documents that were presented to us many months ago.
Uh, the reason I was asking, Mr. Paul's on the planning commission with me, you know, how he feels. But if we're talking about eighteen months on this thing, we've got several things already involved. One is that we're trying to get the land use plan, although we're struggling right now with some issues. And I think we're going to get those solved. But, uh, so are you all wanting us to wait on that, or, or what's the...
I think that'll be addressed in a following motion.
But I mean, if you're, if you're eighteen months out, then our zoning thing has, at least since I've been on there, we, correct me if I'm wrong with Tim, but we've changed things about once every six months or...
Yeah, we have been marked, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things involved.
They weren't still changing.
Like crypto mining comes in, like this is supposed to be addressed. Uh, we've got different things that have, that come to us. I mean, it's kind of like an evolving thing. So I guess I'm wondering what's y'all's timeline and what input? How do we incorporate all that together?
Okay, I can answer based on what we talked about tonight, but I don't think, I don't believe this would stop any of those ur- urgent matters such as, uh, crypto mining. Um, and again, I think it'd be up for your group and then this body to vote on that, of course. But our new plan forward tonight for this group is, we're going to dust off these quotes and proposals. We're going to put together some type of ranking system once they do come back in. And we're going to follow up here, hopefully in about three weeks, review those. And then we're going to invite, uh, those folks in to present, along with anyone in the planning, of course, planning commission and this group too. Present to the long-range planning group, yeah, yeah, basically to defend their proposals. Here's what we can do for you, and here's how much it costs to get there, and hopefully dust off a better timeline.
And, and when you get to a point where y'all make a decision, you will then come to the planning commission?
One hundred percent, yeah, we, we have no, that's right. We have, uh, we will collaborate, support, but again, we have no authority, as everyone knows, to go forward with that. But we want to help, uh, get the input and facilitate that so we can take some of that work off. You've got all these other emergency things going on.
I'm all for that, but I, I think John Neal and Paul both would like to know when, though you don't have no idea really do.
Uh, I can only state what was there before, but times are different and, and we can see what we can, we can squeeze out a better timeline.
Well, folks are curious.
And anyone else on the long-range planning, please feel free to add in?
Well, I was, if you're talking about the meeting where the, the folks came that give their presentation about that plan or whatever, I, I think, and I'm going by memory and I may be wrong, and ju- just so everybody knows, that, um, I think that group thought out a number, now this has been a year and a half ago. You're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this plan. So it ain't free, so just remember that. It's probably going to be more now.
The two quotes that we have right now are around thirty thousand.
Okay. To do this plan, that, that's my, that was my understanding now, I may...
Let me get, Mr. Scarlett, are you?
I'm done.
All right, Mr. Doctor, no, I'm sorry, Katie.
Okay, so, well, it depends on what we ask the company to do, what the price is. That's why there's different numbers out there as far as cost. But the long-range planning committee's goal is to come up with a long-range plan for the county. So we have a disconnect, our land use plan and our zoning don't necessarily state the same thing. But we don't have a big comprehensive plan, which is, gives us more, um, it's stronger and it protects the county more. So we've, we need a comprehensive community vision. I've been on the commission for eight years. We've debated that there's no long-range vision for the county for eight years and longer. You know, if it takes twelve to eighteen months to come up with a good plan, well, it seems like a long time initially, but really it's not, because we haven't gotten to our end result and what we need. So it takes time because we're going to need community input from citizens, from business partners, from cities, from all kinds of entities across the county, as well as our regional planning and our county commission. We all need to work together to come up with this vision and plan. And then, we need professional help, in my opinion. We need detailed strategies for public services and utilities, as well as transportation. It's a very complex issue, but with proper planning, we can do great things for Jefferson County. Um, we need, in my opinion, the broader comprehensive plan to drive down to the land use, which drives to the zoning. And what we're trying to do is flip-flop it right now and make the zoning drive everything else. But we don't have, we don't have the vision to know what we're trying to achieve. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse. And if we're progressive and we come up with a good plan and we work together, I think we can eventually be on the offensive end where we're constantly on the defensive end right now. And, and I just think we all need to work together. I think the long-range planning committee is a really good committee for us, for the county, and I think we can work with the planning. The goal is not to stop all the regional planning changes that need to be done for zoning. It's just to stop this great big broad sweep that we're going to rezone with county overlays. I mean, we're not trying to stop what the, what the planning commission is doing altogether. We just want you to pause so we get good, you know, if we're going to have a business quarter down this road or we're going to have an industrial park over here, whatever we, whatever picture we paint we want to be, that should drive where we decide to rezone these areas and how they're going to look and feel. That, that's the goal.
Um, Mr. Doctor wants to speak.
Well, I'll just say, as a member of the long-range planning committee, perhaps answering the question on timeline. Ultimately, full commission will make the decision. Uh, my perception, what we talk about is, we, we're going to, Mayor Pos is going to ask for updated quotes for these two, two different organizations. Uh, they should be able to get that to us, we think, in a couple of weeks. Long-range planning committee will meet again and perhaps select which one they favor to do this. And then we have someone to recommend, we have a cause. And then we should, in my opinion, have that, we'll go to the budget committee in April, say, here's what we're going to do. These folks are going to tell you about it. Here's what the cause, budget committee, make a recommendation, commission, full commission can vote on it, say yes or no. Uh, they say, yes, then this, this is a group that will see us. Him, in a land use plan, talking each plan, this treaty, they say, they say, no, there was thirty-five people there.
Um, Ms. Nor.
I guess that was a part of my question right there, I heard him say a minute ago, thirty thousand dollars potentially for, is that to hire somebody to come in and tell us? I wasn't sure what that was about.
Yeah, yes, you can answer.
Uh, you don't have to opt for the commission, but part of their process, what they've got listed is evaluating safety maximum data, stakeholder interviews, develop draft plan, maximum policies, stakeholder workshops, development strategies, and finalize maximum planning documents.
So, Ms. Huffaker, so that's one, just one company that you're looking at?
Uh, there's, there's two that's pre, about a year ago, but two that submitted proposals, so we're going to review both proposals. In that day, you could, uh, kow stone and try to select one to recommend to budget committee and county commission.
Okay, and my second question, who's on the committee? I mean, what departments are on the committee? Do you have somebody from transportation and somebody from zoning and somebody, it's just who's on the committee?
Oh, I'm not, sure. I didn't even know that.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, Ms. Huffaker, Randy Bales, Terry Doctory. There's one more, Mr. Burden, that is the long-range planning committee.
And how often do they meet?
They have no set schedule.
This is one of the things that I really spoke loudly about when I was running, is that we haven't had a long-term plan for a long time. And without a long-term plan, um, we're a train wreck. So I, I'd, I'd like to see a long-term plan out there for what we're going to do within the county. But I'd, I'd hope to see, Katie mentioned citizens and businesses and utilities and transportation. I would hope that all those people would have their input on it, um, so that we can get a true full picture to get, you know, the professional experience, um, in there that people know what they're talking about to help out with that committee. So that was just my concern.
Mr. Carmichael.
Bear with me, I'm going to try my best to talk. Been trying to talk all night, but...
At least you don't have to leave the room.
I'm having throat trouble, but my comment is that what you're fixing to do is make such a big mess that ain't nobody going to know nothing, because you're going to have a small committee... small committee start doing something, and then they're gonna have to come back and sell it to the commission, 'cause long-range planning, there, there's nothing it can do, it's a dead-end street. It's gotta come back to the commission. So therefore, the commission is gonna have to make the final decision about what happens. Why would you not circumvent that and start with the commission and start with it? That is my point, that you can waste as many months as you want to investigating something, but you still gotta come back and sell it to twenty-one people. Well, sure, you, you've got a good committee. I think the committee should be involved in it. I think everybody in this room should be involved in it. That's my opinion. You know, we, we've had bad motions that turned into travesties that affected a lot of people in a lot of ways. Tonight, but the point is, if you kick that ball further down the road, you're not doing nothing. All you're doing is adding red tape. Everybody in here, from what I've said here and listened to, since you've spoken, was that you, there's not an end result to this. You're, you're not getting somewhere. If we're gonna spend the time, let's all spend the time together, and it not be a one-sided show, and you do something that in the end, you done it well. Let's quit in this commission right now, trying to just do things, and let's start doing things well. You, you, you talk about teamwork, but you're gonna send five or six people out to do all the investigating. Everybody in this room should be investigating, because any rule that's enacted, any zoning regulation, why is everybody here? Because they can't wait to beat each other over the head with it. That's what this is about. Why can't a dirty lot law get passed in Jefferson County? I can explain that to you. You can't get a dirty lot law, because it'll be used for everything but a dirty lot law. I mean, I just got a call here a couple of weeks ago, a lady called me and said, I live in Ingram Heights, and there's six bags of garbage on my neighbor's front porch. I said, what do you want me to do about it? I'm not in the garbage business. She said, well, up home, where I'm from, we don't allow that. They don't, they don't put their garbage on front porch. I said, ma'am, huh, you're in Tennessee, welcome. You know, you gotta take your garbage to the convenience center. But what happens, and this is why everybody's gonna be standoffish about what you're talking about in zoning. That's why all of this is here, is the fact that somebody wants to keep somebody else from doing something they wanna do. So when you choose these rules and laws, you need to be thinking about that. You need to take everybody in consideration. Lady spoke earlier tonight about, I don't wanna see junk sitting around neighborhood, but it may not be junk to the guy, don't you? So if we're gonna rush to do something, let's concentrate and focus on doing it well. Don't just do something because you think, well, I'm gonna help. That don't work. Do it well, get it right. Listen to your people that deal with it every day. You ain't got eighteen months, because you got people in here right now demanding satisfaction. And that's how it has to work. That's all I can say.
Thanks, sir. Seeing no other requests to speak. Ms. Huffaker, you've spoken twice already.
Can I close?
Yep, you can close.
Thanks for all, Terry.
But wait, unless Mr., you yield to Mr. Snodgrass, and then you close.
That's fine, he can, yeah.
This'll be my second time, right?
I lost track a long time ago.
Yeah, I just, I mean, Jimmy makes some good points. Uh, I agree with that. I don't think, um, this is, um, a side shot or anything of that nature. We would, we're looking to employ a professional group that makes their living analyzing this kind of data and input from the community and collecting that, okay? There, they, they do this for a living, there's many entities, so we're looking at an entity that can go collect that for us, because we come in here almost every meeting talking about zoning, and that group gets beat up all the time unfairly, it seems, in my opinion, but this is one way to get out in front of it, as Katie mentioned, get on the offensive side of it. It's planning and thinking forward, rather than being behind all the trouble all the time.
Ms. Huffaker, you can close.
I, I just wanna say, our, our committee's just a body to, to come back to the full commission with, with a request, like Commissioner Snodgrass is over here. The five of us don't think we're gonna come up with vision for the county. That's not the goal. The goal is that everybody has input, businesses have input, citizens have input. We've all gotta work together. This is complex, and that's why we think we need a professional company to manage this. You, you know, one of their big thing, one of the reasons why it's gonna take so long is getting the community input. That's why it takes several months. This is not to be taken lightly, that the few handful of us on this committee are making the plan for the county. That's why I try to emphasize, we need to work with the Planning Commission. Everybody has a voice, and I'm, it's just not my voice, or the five of us on this committee, it's everybody. And we'll have to talk to the department heads, and we'll have to get good citizen input. And will everybody be happy with the end result? No, some people won't be happy, but the majority should be, and we should have a well-planned out, documented plan to help us for, for the future of Jefferson County. And it's the first time I've actually been excited and encouraged that we were actually gonna make progress, so I really hope that you support, um, this vote.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the motion, since I'm in support of it, so.
Motion by Commissioner Huffaker was for the Long Range Planning Committee to develop a long-range plan in collaboration with the Regional Planning Commission, if I have it down correctly.
You, it's been discussed, you've heard the motion, if you're in favor, vote yes, if you're opposed, vote no. Passes sixteen to two. Next item, motion for the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission to review and update the zoning regulations for Jefferson County and report their recommendations to Jefferson County Commission. Commissioner Tim Seals.
Well, Terry, when I was here, he, I, y'all have any questions? He was pretty clear last week on what he wanted you to do, and I don't know that we even need to do that now, till we hear from the Long Range Planning. Terry, do you have anything else to add?
I'm just looking for a response. That's why I'm looking for a decision to do or to dump.
So, Mr. Seal, you, you have a motion, but there's no second.
Mr. Carmichael.
Do you second it?
He can't make a motion.
I can't make a motion.
Okay, all right.
He just put my name on it.
All right.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
It was asked to be on the agenda, so whoever is gonna volunteer, volunteer.
All right, the reason, there is four people that are talking about zoning. Every one of them said they're not satisfied with what we're doing. If you do this, if, or if we don't do this, then what we're saying is that we want to pause it eighteen months, we'll pause. You don't want us to review it, you don't want us to tweak, do the stuff, you want us to wait, so. I mean, I, the, the Planning Commission, I think what Mr. Terry wants, it, there's a whole lot of ways to do this, there's a whole lot of ways to look at it, but at some point in time, if we don't get started down the road, then when that Long Range Planning Commission comes back, you're gonna be another eighteen to twenty-four months. Pretty soon, you're five or ten years down the road, and we've not done anything. So if y'all want it left exactly the same, then we'll tweak it as we need to, but we're, you know, nothing's gonna get done. So if we don't, if the Planning Commission doesn't have, if the commission says, hey, we don't want you to change a thing, it makes it pretty easy for the Planning Commission. You've got what you got, everybody knows what it is. If you don't like it, too bad, the commission said, don't do it. So, I mean, this is, but it's, it's gonna be a big job to do this, and it's gonna take a while to get started. It's not like we're gonna be ahead of the Long Range Planning Commission on what we're doing, but we, we've gotta get started on this sometime, 'cause if you don't like what's in a thing, then we need to review them. We made reviews on what the subdivision regulation was, we've addressed what the property owners wanted, uh, we've addressed what the buyers wanted, we've, I've made them certify the lots, they can't be selling ditches or things anymore. I mean, we're making progress, but if we, if we just stop now, we're gonna be, we'll be, what would you say, Mr. Terry, at least eighteen, twenty-four months if? If we start on, if the Long Range Planning Commission, if this is this body's decision, that that is gonna require a process, and then we wait on, we wait on our, their, their agenda, or whatever, or their plan, whatever, depending on what's at hand. All right, here's the thing. The question is, to me, is that when they present the plan, is it gonna come directly to the Planning Commission, or is it gonna come back to this board, this body right here, to be voted on, and amended, and amended, and amended, and, and so, and so forth, et cetera? Which then, I don't know, that's gonna take, that's what we have for, we need, uh, and that's important. So, what we may think, they take like eighteen months, but we may be double that. It could be two, three years, out, before we get everything done. I, from what I've seen around on, on these things where people look at, at the planning programs and everything else, here's my worldview. We start, we're done home, and we'll be, and this guy that comes in, and they get paid. At eighteen months, we'll be coming back around, everything else, and then, if there's nothing going on, there's no issues or whatever, they can just die and fall away and get stacked in a stack of papers, like everything else. 'Cause I've seen a lot of people in this county, on very different things like that, they're looking at business and growth and everything else, and I've always just felt like we, we pay these people, and, but we never follow up on what they actually tell us, because a lot of times, what it boils down to is, is that either we're gonna have to spend money, or we're gonna have to pay somebody, and sometimes we just don't wanna do either. So I hope what we do, when we get this paid, get this planned, I hope it's not a waste of taxpayer money, uh, because I've seen it happen to me times, and this county's owed this very thing. I'm, I'm not against it, you know, I, hey, we take any kind of input that we can get, as far as that goes. Uh, our goal is, is to make the county go. All I'm telling you is right now, is that if my people happy, with the way that things were done in this county, and, you know, that's something, here's the thing, all the thing we do, when we make a call in council for you, we make a recommendation, as far as it goes. So you get the final say on it anyway. Only thing I'm saying is, is that, I don't know, if you like to have a courtroom of angry people in here arguing with you over issues, I don't like the planning issue, as far as I know. So my thing is, it looks like people don't like the way things were done, and I'm saying, let's change it. And, and whatever trends, the trends are coming on, that's where we need to go, uh, you know, uh, but we're not, there again, I know, we're not gonna let everybody have it, but we'll make Jefferson County better. That's all I hope. And here, here's something, like, you have just got the mayor and the chairman up there, he's just ending up the new, they're all there, put together the new board for economic development, are we telling them we don't want the Planning Commission to bother them, or, or what are we saying? So I mean, that's the reason I, I think we need to move on with this and, and get started, and it doesn't hurt both, both entities to proceed with.
Uh, Mr. Dockery.
Uh, I, I think I have two comments, and then maybe a question, but first of all, as I said earlier, it, it's, my opinion is, we could get this in front of the commission in April, commission would have the decision to say yes or no. So it is not necessarily eighteen, twenty-four months, commission will decide, hopefully in April, for sure you're not. Uh, as far as I know and understand and have read, Tennessee Code requires that if we do this, Tennessee Code requires you to go to the Regional Planning Committee before it comes to county commission. And then, my other statement and comment or question, if anybody wants to answer, at some point in time last year, um, the Planning Committee requested the county commission to the moratorium on certain developments, identity developments, until they completed the land use plan, or for six months, whichever come first. And I don't remember how many months ago that's been, but I did see the land use plan. So are we saying that y'all are working on zoning and not the land use plan, or you're working on changing zoning without updating the land use plan? So as far as time, we get to see that from the planning.
The land use plan is working pro- It's working progress. We've had some technical difficulties with the thing that didn't get included, and we cannot pass a document that's not active.
Having that, with Doc, having that document not have, on the zoning.
Yes, and we got the, we got the theory stuff done, and the other, but there was some, when we got presented the draft to pass, there's technical issues in there that we cannot do, we cannot pass it like that. And then, the committee's gonna take it back up this month to try and take care of that. So we're there, but we can't do it till we get those.
Mr. Reed.
I appreciate, appreciate what everyone is saying, but I think our citizens have already said, I, regrettably, I was not here for the work session because of an emergency in my family. I'm not sure what was said, but feedback that I have received from citizens was not positive about this plan. I've looked at Tennessee Code, Title VI, Chapter 58, Growth Plan, Urban Growth Boundaries, and as I look through that and I read that, and I encourage every commissioner to read it, I'm wondering if some of this stuff that we're doing is actually legal. So somewhere along the line, I think we're gonna have to get our county attorney involved in this. Uh, let's see, in Section B, just to read one sentence, and this is about the county. Each planned growth area of the county shall identify territory as a reasonable and prudent person would project as a likely site of high or moderate density commercial, industrial or residential growth over the next twenty years, based on historical experience, economic transpopulation. It goes on to talk about what you're gonna have to do with urban infrastructure in order to make this growth feasible. We don't ever even hardly talk about infrastructure. Infrastructure is so important. You can grow, and if you don't take care of the infrastructure, you're gonna be spinning your wheels for a lot more than eighteen months. So I think that we have a committee that is dedicated to work through as a team and bring it back to us, and we can get something done that is good for the county. We've got a lot of new residents coming in, a lot of them are getting involved within our local government, and I appreciate that fact. But if we're gonna do something, as Jimmy said, let's do it right. It sounds like we're on the right track. You know, we can look at things with the Regional Planning Committee as we progress through this committee, all right? I, I mean, we did it with, when we had to do the, uh, redistricting, and not all twenty-one commissioners were involved in that, and we had to have outside help with that. But I think we need to, if, if we're looking at an overlay that's going down main roads, I think we need to put that on hold, and we can make sure we're doing it right. I think we're just grasping at things. Thank you.
Ms. Huffaker.
Okay, I failed to mention the Alliance, which, I don't know if that's the proper name, but of course, they'll be involved in this. I mean, we would not, that's a major part of us, and they would be involved. I think it's like some of our citizens said tonight, Miriam said, she talked about blanket changes, and that's what Commissioner Reed's talking about. I don't, yes, the zoning and the planning needs to continue, but the big blanket changes, that's what I wanted to pause. That's what we need, we need to better define our areas and what our future growth is before we make blanket changes. And, and I said it earlier, I'm not asking the, I'm not asking the planning to stop altogether, I think they still, you still need to be working on things, but I don't want you to go out and waste a bunch of time on these big blanket changes when it doesn't line up with what the future of the county- on these big blanket changes when it doesn't line up with what the future of the county, what the citizens want. And we haven't defined that yet, so. Our documentation all needs to line up together. We need a good overview and then we need good specific rules at the bottom. And we have to get there. The only way I can see that we can get there with the big blanket is to hire professionals. So on this motion, I'm not even sure how to vote because I do think that the planning commission should continue, um, with areas. Mr. Lipton, he pointed out things that needed to be worked on, but still sending to the long-range planning for an overview. So the motion doesn't define what kind of updates from the zoning to send to us. I just don't want people to go out, waste a bunch of time. If you do the blanket rezoning down a major corridor, you're gonna upset everybody in the county and that doesn't help us achieve our goal. We can see that from the mega site and what happened and I don't wanna see that happen again. So those are my comments.
Seeing no requests to speak. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Say the motion again, please.
Can you say, repeat your motion?
All the motion is, is the, is does the county commission want the planning commission to undertake a review of our zoning and look forward to what the county's future is? If you don't want us to do that, just tell us. We won't waste the time. But if you want us to proceed and keep working on these things, that, and with it, they're not all gonna be big issues and we, there's several ways to do what Ms. Huffaker's talking about that does not include rezoning. But one of the complaints we've always heard in this thing is I didn't know that if I bought this house, there might be some, the zinc mine might sell some property and there might be something there that's gonna be built at the zinc mine property. Or I had a lady tell me the other day that was down here complaining about the campground. She said, and I quoted, why I had no idea that farm was gonna be anything but houses. But what we want to say to people, if you click on this thing and buy it from California, we want that to be.
Mr. Karma.
I'm gonna try to speak again, but, um, a few years back, I guess it was my third year as chairman of this commission, the, uh, state of Tennessee ordered and summoned me to Nashville because the county commission didn't approve an urban growth boundary. And I was the sitting chairman that took the vote. I had to hire an outside attorney. I could not use the county attorney. And had to drive all the way to Nashville and spend a whole day in front of three judges. I believe it was John, was you there? I believe you was there. Because the county commission didn't pass a simple overlay growth boundary. And I had to stand in front of them judges and did I know what I was doing? No. But I understood what the process was. But what I'm saying about tonight is, days, you will answer to the state and their rules and regulations. They will call you to the floor. You will answer the question. I told them, I said, I don't think the commission understands as a whole what an urban growth boundary is. And that lady judge kinda felt sorry for me standing up there because I'm just no redneck hillbilly. She's like, well, I think I understand where you're coming from. I said, this commission did not vote for that because there was no leadership. Nobody told them to. They didn't know what to do. They're all thinking, well, if I vote for this growth boundary, all my residents are gonna be mad and burn my barn down tonight. But, you know, until you have to go down there and answer to something that you don't have a clue what you're doing, you know, this is my point tonight, is that no matter what you decide that you want to do, you're still gonna answer to the state the whole time you're doing it and that's why this right here needs to pass. Thank you.
Mrs. Scarlett, this was your original motion, um, have you closed or you?
Yeah, I'm, the original motion is just that it has to, you want us to proceed with the review.
And make recommendations.
And make recommendations, it's just as simple as that. There's no master plan. It's something that's gonna be a work in progress. That's just simply the motion.
Just point clarification. I, I may not understand sure. I thought the motion was proceed with overrated.
No, 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 that is still under, that is still under consideration with being on the planning commission. I think Mr. Rena just brought that up as a point that we need to review. That has been brought up, talked about the planning commission. This is, this motion is not in any way to approve anything other than to say, y'all need to look at this and come back and make a recommendation.
And you look at it and you continue to, uh?
Continue business normal, but start going through the, because there has been so many complaints about what our zoning is in each sign, what's allowed in here, whatever, if there's a campground or this thing. So what the motion that I made is, does the commission want us to proceed with going through, starting with the review of all of the, the zoning districts and regulations and what's involved in them and come back and make a report to you? If we don't, that's fine.
So, review, update and recommend county commission?
Yes, sir.
Yes or no?
Yes.
So you've closed the argument?
Yes.
You, can you mean the motion? They've already started voting. Hold on, one, one question. That, that person, what's your?
A third question on the motion, if that's allowed.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess yes or no, if I understand that. If we vote yes on this and something unforeseen or unexpected issue arises like Cristo Mine did a while back, then the planning committee feel free to come and say, here's an issue that's roads and here's what we think and they can come to commission and the commission can act on it or that's not, is that correct?
That is correct. There, there's nothing that's gonna prevent any other, we're gonna do normal business, but those issues, this is just to say, hey, start the whole thing and start again. If you don't want us to go sit in the whole fight, vote no.
Mrs. Scarlett has closed the motion. Uh, if you wanna suspend the rules and speak, I'd need a motion and a second and it'd take fourteen votes.
Not after the motion's closed.
Not now.
People's done voted.
Yeah, people's already voting, so.
Against the rules, didn't talk.
All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Passes fifteen to three. That is the last item that we have on our agenda. Ms. Blin.
I wanted to say something to our highway department director and to the E nine one one director, I think they've left. Over, uh, New Year's Eve, we had a big sinkhole come down in Strawberry Plains and, uh, some citizens called the, uh, county dispatch who were already busy as could be, as you can imagine. And they got down there and filled it in pretty good and then they had to come back two nights later, if I'm right, Ransome. And they did another great job for us. I really appreciate what they do. And that saved us a whole lot of problems in the morning. Some didn't know it was there. It's quite big. A car could probably go in it. It was at the very edge of our county in Strawberry Plains, Adams Road over there next to the severe county line, Knox County line. Anyways, thank you for what you all do every holiday when it's ho, cold or snowing or raining or whatever. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blin. Much adjourned?
So much.
All opposed, stay in your favor league.
You citizens that spoke tonight, House Bill zero zero one, Senate Bill zero zero one, it had been introduced and assessed in legislature on the, uh, resolution that we passed tonight. So support that.